Joe, do you, while you're looking at it, do you have any questions off the top of your head?
No, not, no, well, the only question I ask if you would explain what difference this is over the one from last year. What significantly is the main difference here?
You mean for the entire budget?
Trouble.
Yeah, well, one, one of the things the mayor wanted was to, he made some additions to animal control. He added two, he added two employees to, to animal control.
Okay.
Uh, he added a, I think a parks coordinator, parks and rec coordinator. And, we've added the, the chief got a grant or the mayor got a grant for some additional policemen, police officers, ten additional police officers, and that has been added to the budget.
Adding some more police officers?
Yes, sir, the mayor got a grant and so it's paid for over the next four years, I believe it's four years. And so those, those are the significant differences. As the sanitation truck, but you guys had already approved that last year. And so those are the significant differences, everything else is pretty much.
Differences.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, everything else is utilities, salaries and wages. And the, he, he, he added a four percent code for all the employees.
Added what?
Four percent cost of living adjustment.
Four percent cost of living budget increase.
Yes, and so those are the significant differences for the budget all around. As far as street sanitation, and you know, there, there are no significant differences in the budget. Where the difference is in the landfill, I moved the demolition from, the demolition expense from code enforcement to sanitation. Cause it's, it's, that's the, that's the more appropriate department for it to be is sanitation. So with $7,500, I moved that from code enforcement and I placed that in sanitation. The sanitation truck, that, and the cost of living increased, there are no other significant changes.
Okay.
Now, also Joe, and anybody else, Don, I see thing Don is on for, just for, general knowledge, the, right now we have a, a cost of living increase, a four percent that the mayor entered, that the mayor wanted in there at four percent. That's, that, that increases the budget about $200,000, over $215,000. A three percent increase would have been like 165,000. And what we're paying for it, what we're gonna use to pay for it is, I, I projected some increases in, sales tax, like a pre-sale tax, they've been increasing, particularly with COVID. I don't see COVID dying out anytime soon, I think we're gonna still have the same economic benefits from it. And so I, I've projected a three percent increase in, in sales tax revenues, and then we have additional revenues that I, that may help us out throughout, throughout the year, but I don't wanna really count those right now, I kinda wanna, be a little bit conservative in those. Also, I noticed that in the landfill department, I only budgeted, I think, nine point nine or nine point eight, near nine point nine, well, nine hundred thousand dollars, I think it was. I've noticed that so far through 2021, we had about 1.1 million dollars in landfill revenues. So I may adjust those revenues, be conservative. My main issue with the landfill revenues were primarily with collections. And so even though I can project what the revenue should be, I'm always leery of, you know, sometimes our collection efforts. But so far through December 2021, we had about 1.1 million dollars in landfill revenues. Even though I only projected about, I think, 990,000 dollars for 2022. So I may adjust those projections.
That was in the police department, you say?
That was, that was, that was landfill.
Landfill.
Yes, sir. So I may adjust those projections, but like I said, I'd like to be conservative. We actually did have 1.1 million through December 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
And so that's just in case anyone wants to know what, how we're gonna pay for the, the COA.
Well, I just wanna say hello, everybody, make sure you know I'm on, Derek's seem to be doing a great job, so I'm not gonna interrupt you.
I mean, there's not much to, it's not much to discuss.
I had asked a question, he answered my question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if you're on, but I, I was telling them that you had requested a four percent cost of living adjustment. I was telling them that that cost of living adjustment would cost approximately 215,000 dollars. And it'd primarily be paid for with an increase in my projections. I increase sales tax revenue by about three percent, and I, I, I feel pretty confident in it. And so the majority of that can be, would be paid for with that. I have some other revenue that I think will come through, but I'll be conservative with that. Uh, but I think there's a good chance that some other revenue will come in, but like I said, I haven't really included it in the projections. Well, I wait a couple of weeks to decide, you know, how, how much that confidence I can have in those revenues, I may add those as well. I was telling Joe, whoever else is listening, and I'm not sure if you were on at the time, that I had projected, let me see exactly.
Did, uh, did the department heads meet with the mayor before this budget was put together or after it's put together? Have they discussed it with the mayor?
Oh, yes, sir. They discussed with me and the mayor.
The department. Generally, excuse me, generally Joe, the, department heads meet with Derek, Derek May back and forth. But yeah, I always try to make sure the department heads know now's the time.
Yeah, so it's all been, that's what I was trying to say, it's all been taken care of prior to this meeting.
Well, the department heads had their opportunity, yeah, but now that doesn't mean, you know, we can't change or add things, there were a few things that, that didn't make it in by my December first deadline. That I'd be seeing in there as well. I, I can't necessarily say if there's anything in this part we're covering tonight, but, I mean, there were some things that came on at the end of the fiscal year, the new garbage truck that we're getting. Which I, I hope we get any day now. And there's some equipment aids, the four percent, I'll, I'll talk about that real quick. I mean, four percent raise, four percent Cobra, or COA, I'm sorry. Cost of living increase, I mean, inflation last year was not as really significant an issue as it is this year. Four percent. Last year we did a three percent COA, and, you know, there was some fear based on our past experience, as far as I'm told, of being able to afford that. You know, the year before that, we were lucky to be able to make payroll. And it would have been easier to make payroll if we hadn't done that three percent, that's for sure. But I, and, and then, you know, I think it's important to point out during the worst of COVID, I personally felt that it was important not to, if we could avoid it, not to lay off employees. And my first year, we did a lot through attrition. When people left, we didn't replace them. We distributed job duties to more people, more, as I've said many times, we all had to do more, either on the same or less even sometimes. And, and we rose to the occasion, as a city, our employees did, our departments did, found ways to save money, and we got through that first year and ended it with a surplus. We got off the bad list with legislative audit, which was the first time our city had ever been on it, is what they told me, anyway. And then last year, or the second year, I should say, let's see, let me get my years straight. In 2021, fiscal year 2021, we were able to offer a three percent cost of living increase, because, you know, and, and just for anybody, I'm not sure who else on. Most people know this, but for those who might not know, when you have, you know, when, when it costs more to go grocery shopping, and you don't get a raise, then you've actually decreased your earning power. And so COAs are a way to try and allow employees to keep up with the economy, and inflation is not generally, is, I think Derek might agree with this, not necessarily as bad locally as it's some, it is nationally in some cases. That's kind of one good thing. But it is still higher this year, and so we wanted to go up to four percent. And then we can only pay what we can pay, and then we wanna be able to do it without laying people off, if anything, we need more people. And everybody's, again, everybody knows it's gotten to be very difficult to hire people, to find people, to employ people, to keep people, to retain people. And there's no difference with the city or any, any organization. We, we're all struggling, and like last year, we had a, a, a cost of living increase, we also had a minimum wage increase. I'm, I'm sure Derek's covered all that, but this year we don't have the minimum wage increase. So that gives us a little bit more leeway, I hope, to, to go up to four, so that's all right.
Okay.
And, and Mayor, the, the landfill number revenue that I projected was 979,000 for 2022, and I was being a little conservative, that was, though, that so far, well, through December of 2021, we had 1.1 million in revenue, or landfill revenue. And so I like to be conservative, I may adjust that, my project. But I was telling Joe, my concern is with the collection efforts, but, you know, it's kind of leery of our collections, sometimes, I think we've done a good job of, we've collected 1.1 million dollars in revenues this year. But that's, so I may make that adjustment to, uh, to landfill revenues.
Yeah, and I, I know Mr. Jones, I believe is on, I heard him earlier, and, and he can jump in when he wants to, but, we've had a lot of activity at landfill with trying to close one sale and the reopening of the new sale. And Derek, he might be better to address this part, but once we get the, the sale fully closed, we're, we're eligible for some closing funds, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure exactly how much it is, yeah, but they'll release our surety bonds. We'll release some surety bonds, and so, uh, and I can't think off the top of my head how much it is, so yeah, well, once the bond, once the sale is closed, we'll receive some, release those bonds, and so that'll help out too.
And, and also like with any business, you know, we have to worry about our, our own past deals with vendors, but we also have to worry about those who owe us. And so I know at one point, I can't remember exactly when, but, you know, I asked to see the, the past due, past thirty, and, and called the vendors personally, and, you know, and had a good, I think all of them responded. Sometimes it just takes a phone call. And that helped with our collection efforts, and so we just wanna keep doing that and keep an eye on it.
That's those, that's those people that dump in our landfill and owe us money, how, how does that stand out, not heard y'all say?
No, that's right, though.
What's it look like? How much money do they owe us?
Well, I can't tell you where it looks like today, I don't know if anybody else can. But I, we've tried to stay within that thirty day past due, and of course, there, there, you're gonna have some, we'd have some concerns about, I think a bigger concern, right, that was a concern, and, and the staff out there, who alerted me to it. So I wanna make sure and point that out. There were some who hadn't paid in a while, and, and so that's when I asked for it, that's when I called in, and I'd say, I think all of them responded pretty promptly. I think our bigger concern right now is to make sure of two things with the landfill. One, the state law, to reiterate, and for people who don't, but first of all, I mean, I, I'm trying to remember that, I'm, I'm not exactly sure who's on board, or who's watching, but, our landfill, as everybody else here knows, is a regional landfill for three counties, and we are designated by the state of Arkansas to be the landfill for all of those government entities within those three counties. And the law says they must use our landfill. During the promulgation of the rules to enforce that law, which was passed in 1991, I might add, it's not really a new thing. Our solid waste district, we're a member of six counties, so the three of us in ours and the other three in northern counties, there was some disagreement about enforcement of that provision. And that's what gave rise to the issues with St. Francis County that y'all remember. So we wanna make sure that that's being adequately enforced. And that's kind of where our focus has been and continues to be.
Yeah, Joe, I, I think it's more so as getting the garbage, uh, refuse from the people that are supposed to bring it to us that are, that aren't. I think the ones that are supposed to, that we're okay with them right now. But the ones we're concerned, the ones that are supposed to, that aren't bringing it to us.
Okay.
Does any, as I see, uh, Mr. Ethel and Ms. Ford are on, do, do you guys have any questions about sanitation, street or landfill so far?
Don't at this time.
Okay. Did you, uh, Mr. Ethel, did you hear me tell you how much the, uh, the COA cost, the total cost of the COA was for all employees?
I did, and if you, I was, I was actually gonna send you a message and ask you to send it, tell me again, cause I didn't get a chance to write it down.
Okay, well, what I have right now is two hundred, with two sixteen, 216,941 dollars and sixty cents.
And which one was that, was it three percent or four percent?
That's the four percent.
Okay.
Uh, the three percent was 166, 249, 57.
Okay.
Now, the, and will include, uh, no electors were included in that, in that four percent. So that's only, uh, employees only.
And you just said, you said 106, 249, 57 for three percent?
166.
166, that, that's a big difference, okay, see, 166, okay, alright.
One six, 166, 249, 57. And the four percent was 216, 941, 60.
Okay, I get it.
And like I said, pretty much the, the expenses are pretty much the same. Uh, what, what I did was I, I went through, I went through each land item. Pulled out extraordinary items, one time only items that were large, and I kind of just projected out for the rest of the year, so that's what you're seeing when you look at those land items in the street, landfill, the sanitation department. And the only difference, like I explained to Joe, I don't know if you were on at the time, let's explain to Mr. St. Columbia, was that I moved the $75,000 demolition expenditure from, expenses from code, code enforcement to sanitation. Cause I figured that, uh, the sanitation department is the most appropriate department for them to be. So other than that, everything else is pretty much, uh, standard operations. The sanitation truck you guys appropriated in 2021, that is included in the, in the mayor's budget, so that's already in the budget. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Not, not from me.
Okay, but, and, and I'd like to talk, tell the city council members at any point in time, if you have any questions, just, you know, just give me a call, send me an email. And I'll, you know, get you the information that you need, but like I said before, those three departments are pretty much just standard operations. There are no significant expenditures that were requested. Like I said, other than the garbage truck, but the new garbage truck, that's already included in there, we've purchased it. And other than that, everything else is pretty much standard operating expenses. That I can think of, if I think of any of them. But I think that's pretty much it in those three departments.
Yeah, I, I got a question, if I can ask it, if y'all don't mind.
Yeah.
Uh, what we're gonna go with my employee, we're gonna, we're gonna do the four percent, right?
Mr. Jones, all I can tell you is that the mayor proposed in his budget, it's up to the city council to decide what they want.
Oh, okay, 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 I didn't know, I, I got in kind of late, I heard three percent, and then another one, quote for four percent.
Well, I was giving them the difference, I was telling them, I was trying to show them the difference between a four percent and a three percent increase. It's like $50,000 difference.
Okay.
And so that's, that was my purpose of showing, telling them that.
Okay, okay.
Basically, uh, Mr. Turner, you're giving the council the option to go either three percent or four percent, and you're recommending which?
I'll give you the option, I mean, I mean, you, you responsible for the city's finances, I'm putting it out there so you can kind of,
Yeah.
see.
But you say we have, we have the money to do either?
Yes, well, yeah, and that's what I was telling the mayor, and that's what I was telling you guys, I'm projecting like a, I guess because my projections come out to be about three percent increase in sales tax, I guess that has something to do with inflation. And so the mayor's tying that, that cost of living right in with that increase in sales tax, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Okay, so where, you feel, you feel secure with the three percent and the four percent as well?
I feel secure with the three percent, but I think we can make, I, I don't think we have a problem paying it four percent. Like I said, it's fifty, it's fifty thousand dollars difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just, let me just clarify something on the three, for, three percent is what we did last year. Inflation was not as serious an issue last year, it was an issue though. But we also gave minimum wage increases that were mandated by law, if you remember. So we had to deal with the additional expense of the minimum wage increase as well as the inflation issue. And I, I'm pretty confident that we've done COAs in the past before I got here, but there are, there's always the issue of being able to afford it, and being able to do it without laying off people. So this year, Joe, we don't have minimum wage increase staring at us. And so, and we have a bigger inflation problem. But as Derek just pointed out, we also are beneficiaries of that inflation, right? Because our sales tax is a percentage, so the larger the amount of the sale, the larger the percentage of the tax collected. So what Derek is trying to say, I think, is when we did the, the budget, we were trying to, trying to balance that out and do, and err on the side of being, you know, conservative in our, our estimates, so we think four percent is possible.
Okay.
And like I said, it's, at different point during the year, I think inflation rate had increased like six percent earlier in the year, so.
Yeah, I think if we look at the national CPI, um, you know, it's, it's higher than that. And the question is, will the buying powers, does that, does that correspond to buying power here locally? I, I don't know, I'm gonna defer to people smarter than me, but we also have to operate within what we can afford.
That's right, that's right. That's why I was asking the question.
So, um, but is that about right, Derek?
Yeah.
Let's say that.
Yeah.
So I know we have a meeting coming Thursday. Derek, what's on the agenda as far as the departments? Do you have that? I have it somewhere, but I look at it.
There is a fire department.
Fire department Thursday.
And I'll go ahead and, and say, and then we'll see if there are any more questions before we dismiss. Or any other, or anything else before we dismiss, that, and y'all have all heard by now, that, Chief, and I would have said this at the start of the meeting, but I wasn't at the start of the meeting, so. But it, it was announced today earlier that Chief Smith has retired, will retire effective February fourth. And I've appointed Assistant Chief Mayfield to be acting chief, effective the same time, and, you know, we're, I said in my statement, and Chief Smith said in his statement, all that we feel about that, I won't reiterate, we reiterate that now, except to say deeply appreciative I am of his service to the city and his partnership with me over the last very challenging three years. And he will continue to be a friend and a source of information. And I think that Chief, Chief Mayfield, who, who I, I think is one of the, the best decisions I've made, and along with Chief Smith, will, will also rise to the task and, and be a good interim chief. So I just felt like I should address that, because that's pretty big news for our city, and, they don't know that, I'd be glad to take questions if there are any. So, um, anyway, so we're gonna look forward to Thursday night and the fire department. Right, is it just the fire department?
Fire department Thursday night, yes.
Okay. So are there any other questions, anything else to come before this workshop?
I have no further questions, thank you.
Anybody else? And as Derek said, you know, we're available, uh. Well, we try to be available for, uh, as much as possible, uh, before and after meetings as well, so feel free to reach out to us.
They have my phone number, so they know how to get in touch with me.
So if you think of something later, in between, or before, or anything, be sure to let us know. All right, if there's nothing else, without objection, we'll go ahead, and this is a, really an informal work, budget workshop, um, due to COVID, as you know. Um, um, we're doing this by saying, if we were to take any illegal actions. Um, we would need, uh, as, as I understand it, uh, have. We would, we would need to follow whatever the governor, the, the, um, municipal, you know, there's the city attorney and informers to do. These are informal workshops designed to inform both council and the, uh, public and take questions and get information. And so forth, so having said that, thank y'all for attending, and we'll see y'all Thursday.
Have the fire chief handy Thursday.
Right, he will.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, good night, everybody.